President.
Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rainey. Present. We are called to order. Commissioner Lucas, would you do our prayer and pledge, please?
Please stand. By your heads, dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. God, we thank you for this great community that we live in. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for the betterment of our community. Be with those that could be with us tonight and those that couldn't. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item five, public hearings. Item six, citizen comments. Ms. Johnson, do we have any tonight?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Item seven, public announcement, city events. Richard?
Good evening. Just a reminder that March 31st is the last day to purchase your personalized fence pickets for the new playground. It's 23-character limit, letters and numbers only, no special characters or emojis. And just to let you know, as of this morning, we have had a total of 406 tickets that have been purchased. And we would like to thank everyone that has purchased those pickets, but please purchase more. Keith, can you go to the next slide? April the 9th is our Easter egg hunt here at City Hall. We're going to have food trucks. We're going to have games for the kids. Going to have over 2,000 Easter eggs and also the Easter Bunny. And then June 4th, 11th, and 25th, we're going to have a summer movie series at Bowie Park. Then July the 2nd, Playground Grand Opening. That's the day that everyone's been looking forward to. And then going to follow with a movie in the park as well that evening. Then July 3rd is our Independence Day Celebration here at City Hall. We're still needing sponsors for that event. If you'd like to be a sponsor for that event, please come by City Hall. October the 8th is our Second Annual Arts and Crafts Fair at Bowie Park. We'll get that posted out here in the next couple of weeks. November 5th is Pork in the Park as well. And if you'd like to be a sponsor of that event, please contact us here at City Hall. And then November 25th through December 31st is Holiday Wonders at Bowie Park as well. December 3rd is our Tree Lighting Event and Vendor Fair. And then December the 10th is our Christmas Parade. It's going to be a traditional Christmas parade that evening. That's all for me.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Ross? Thank you, sir. Item eight, staff comments and monthly reports. Mr. Collins, I'm assuming that you're everyone again this month?
I am.
If you'll put your fire hat on first.
Yes, I'll put my fire hat on first. The Fire Department report for the previous month, our calls, this is through December, actually, I'm sorry, February, our calls this month were 85 now from 106 last year. I'm sorry, that's police.
Let us catch up.
We'll start with police.
Well, is that where we are?
I apologize. I was excited about being a fireman. I apologize. I'll delay that excitement and be a policeman.
Completely understandable.
Having been a policeman for a long time, I get the... Police Department monthly report, training hours were 574. In the month of February, that's up from 360. There was the month of January. The next page, our calls for service total, 1,003 in February, down from 1,009 in January. That's always good for us. The next page, arrests, in February, 84. That's up from 67 in January. Domestic arrest, zero, which is good for the community for DUI arrest. 24 drug charges and three theft arrests. Total citations were 138. Traffic accidents, we had 13. Property damage only were 12, injuries one, and fatalities zero, which is always a good number for the city and for the community. And lastly, we have Officers Roberts, Spicer, and Rasmussen that will be graduating from the academy on April 1st, and we'll be able to get them into patrol service. As you're aware, we've been down on police staffing for some time. We're able to get most of those positions filled. We'd be glad to have those officers in patrol and helping us with our day-to-day patrol services. We look forward to have them on staff. And I'd be, with that, be glad to answer any questions that I can regarding the Police Department or Police Department report.
Are there any questions? Okay. I'm not going to make you be one or the other, right? I'm just going to wait so it comes up.
That's okay. We'll move on to the Fire Department. Total calls for service were 85. That's down from 106 last year and down from 109 last month. So that's a good month when our numbers are down in the Fire Department. We had, last month, we had 13 overlapping incidents. Overlapping incidents are when we are on one call and another call goes out. Five automatic mutual aid responses to building fires and assisted the county with one large non-structure fire. We had 35 interactions at four events with the Police Department is regarding, or with the Fire Department regarding interactions with the public. Dispatch to arrival time was 5 minutes and 50 seconds. Average operating on-scene time was 15 minutes and 39 seconds. And then lastly, the last line, obviously, we each month encourage our residents to inquire about smoke detectors. They can call the direct line, 615-799-3473, if they have a question or a request regarding a smoke detector. And as always, if there's an emergency, dial 911. Don't call the direct line to the Fire Department. February call breakdowns continue to be the same pattern that we see. The most of those, 68% were rescue and emergency calls. The other were standard calls for service. The next page, the heat map. Nothing's changed on these, obviously. The heat or the red areas are the most calls, and the vast majority of those center around Highway 100 in the center of town, and then Highway 96 corridors where we get the other two areas for the most of our calls in the Fire Department. The next page is just some cleaning and operational work that we have within the Fire Department itself, including a repair we're making to the Fire Department building, which is a standard repair. It looks worse than it is. It's just a water leak repair that had to be made. And then the next page is our training hours, 550 hours, which is similar to what the Police Department had for the month. And then our last page are just some training photos and information that we have as far as Training Department. One item that is interesting for us is the item on the right, the infrared camera that we have. So you can train with those and see inside of a hotspot building or other area, and that infrared will help us identify, obviously, heat and/or people or other things that generate heat if there's not supposed to be there. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can regarding the Fire Department.
Are there any questions? Okay. If you'll put on your city manager hat.
Yes, Mayor. City manager hat, nothing for tonight with the exception of information in the amended budget report, which we'll get into when we get into the agenda.
Any questions? Hearing none. We will move on. Item nine, consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
And Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 10, old business stormwater ordinance. We will open the public hearing for the stormwater ordinance. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Yes, ma'am. If you'll come up to the podium and just tell us your name and tell us your address.
Yeah, my name is Lori Coranta, 7507 Nathaniel Woods Place. And we are in the Western Woods subdivision, and we are new to the community. We have noticed a lot of problems. We've done a lot of investigation. I'm trying to talk as fast as I can for the three minutes.
No, well, this is a public hearing, so you can slow down. You can take a breath and slow down.
Okay. I've talked with Mr. Collins. I've talked with Lisa. And I have also talked with the developer for Western Woods. He's going to come out next week and meet one-on-one with me. We have a lot of water backed up. I have sent it on a flash drive, and I believe Mr. Collins has a copy of it, as well as the city engineer, Mr. Blackburn. And we have, because of that, we looked at the pictures, and the drain that feeds the water out of our subdivision is completely clogged. And it would be a very easy fix, literally a couple hours of city time. I can't step onto that because it would be the city's responsibility because it's on city property. So legally, it's the city's responsibility. But what I have done to shore up our house is we've hired Frontier Foundations, and they have encapsulated our house, done a smart pipe around, and it was feeding out water for hours. I mean hours, hours and hours. So it goes way down, and it's basically shoring up our property. It's encapsulating the hole under crawl space, the dehumidifier, the sub-pump, encapsulating everything to protect our investment. My thing is, I'm not going against you guys, but I'm wanting to protect my investment. And everybody I've talked to, from the HVAC guys that have come out, that have replaced the ducting that got wet, to everything else, it falls back on, it's like, is it the chicken or the egg? We don't know. Is it the city's responsibility, the developers? The developers willing to meet with me. My insurance company, he came out, he met with me, and he said, we are in a zone one of 10 on the FEMA flood factor. That's why we bought the house. I'm a California girl. I'm not used to this water. But I have been indoctrinated really quick into Drainage 101. People back home are laughing at me. Like, did I ever think I'd be in this situation? Not really. But I'm willing to work with y'all, if I'm saying it right. I want to work with you. I just want to come to a solution. I don't want to blame. All we have is here and now. I can't go back to the developers, can't go back to the previous owners, but I have to be responsible for my property, and I want to shore up my neighborhood and to help out my neighbors. You know, God calls us to help out one another, love one another, and that's what I'm doing. And I plead with you guys, plead. Like, just start with that. I know you have to work with that Spicer guy, whoever he is. He's, you know, getting the easement, that's one part. But I mean, there is literally a tree growing in the middle of that drain, and our handyman pushed it away after that big rain, February 17, and literally, it just started gushing in there. So just that simple fix, a couple hours of city time to come out, you know. Like I said, I can't do it. I don't want to hire a handyman, then have him get swallowed up, and then that's a whole other lawsuit we're not even going to talk about. So, you know, for the betterment of the community and just resale, if people should, you know, leave, literally, it is like of utmost concern for you guys because if you can't sell the house, you have to legally disclose anything you know about the house. Otherwise, it falls on you. Either the people were just completely blind before us, or they just turned a bird and just didn't care. But, I mean, when we sold our house in California, we had a long list of disclosures because I know, being in the legal field, you don't want to go back on that. So that's where I'm at. I plead with you guys. Anybody else living in Western Woods, they'll know what I'm talking about. They're free to come to our house and see it for themselves. I've shown Lisa pictures. You've seen pictures, Scott. Literally, it's something to behold. I just want to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak during the public hearing on the stormwater ordinance?
Hello, I'm Tiffany Wilson Mobley. I live at 7303 Cox Run Pike, Cox Run Court, in the Cox Run subdivision. I haven't seen you all in a few months. I hope you are all doing well, you and your family and your loved ones. I wanted to start out this evening by saying I appreciate very much the stormwater ordinance that's been put together. Not sure how that was put together. I don't know if that was something that was created or something gotten from other, somewhere else, Mr. Collins, or...
It was not a copy and paste. It was an exhaustive effort by our engineering department.
It's really, really, you can tell a lot of work's gone into it. I really congratulate the city for this action. And I want to express some questions about it and just to get some more information from myself, also Mary Kaiser, who lives in our subdivision, who wasn't able to be here, and others. One of the concerns is, we don't want this great, you know, amount of work to be just a tick in the box, and that it's not actually followed. We don't want it to be something that's just done and finished, and I'm sure you don't either. Just as a citizen, I want to make sure we say that. Also have a question about the teeth of the document. I know that that's come up in lots of meetings, things having teeth or not having teeth, and we need to have it. And that is to make sure that there can be enforcement based on this document. Ms. Dr. Kaiser said that she said, remember that the max fine of $50 was ignored by developers. So I noticed within this ordinance that if there are violations, it can be a $50 fine, all the way up to a $5,000 fine, and just wanted to get some more clarification on that. Because as we all know, if something is not, if there's no impetus to make sure we're following it, or there's no serious enforcement of it, it's just not going to have the teeth, as mentioned. That's the next question, how to ensure consequences for violating the ordinance. And also, what is the proposed path forward with this? I think that one of the things that's, I know we've experienced in my own home, we obviously have many, many concerns in our neighborhood. We've heard lots of concerns around the city. And I want to just say that this is not a matter of just a complaint. It's not a people, a matter of people being an emotional mess, or that we are whining. Our home that we have, we have two children that have worked extremely hard in school to do very well. They're off to college soon, one next year and one in about four years. So it is vital that we not have our home damaged by stormwater runoff, erosion, et cetera, like everyone else in Fairview, and have to tap into those girls' college funds. This is really important, strong matter. Erosion, stormwater, we understand, we all know, this is a big problem. Otherwise, we wouldn't have an ordinance like this. So I'm wondering how this will move forward. And maybe when I finish talking, we'll get to have that answer. I know that sometimes in these meetings, we ask lots of questions. We don't get questions necessarily answered, or we get a lot of information later, and then we never kind of get to come back up and talk about it. So I'm kind, that's a big deal to me, to find out the answer to that. Okay. I'm going to get into some specifics. I have read the entire document, and I'm wondering if everyone has, as we're voting, as you are voting on it tonight. So maybe some of these questions that I've had, you came up in your reading. First off, my goggles on here so I can see this. Okay. The purpose of this, as we have right on page four, is to protect, maintain, and enhance the environment of the city of Fairview, and public health, safety, and general welfare to the citizens of the city by controlling discharges of pollutants to the city's stormwater system, and to maintain and improve the quality of the receiving waters into which stormwater outfalls flow, including without limitation lakes, rivers, streams, ponds, wetlands, and the groundwater of the city. So my question is, obviously, we're committing to this purpose. My question is, we realize that once this is accepted, it will be applied to developments that come from here forward? But what about the developments that have been improved lately? One of our big, or just for a while, actually, one of the big concerns that I have is, since we're improving the quality of receiving waters, and we have developments that have been approved without a lot of information, plans that weren't there, or sketches that were turned in, and we didn't have all of this necessary information that's obviously required here, further information that's required here, I should say, how are you going, are you going to retroact this information to those other developments, to make sure that that purpose is also protecting the folks around those other developments? Northwest Highway, the Castleberry folks, the folks on Old Nashville, us, in Cox Run subdivision, Bowie Nature Park, all of the places that we've, Northwest Highway, all of these places that have been approved, and I know there are many more. How are we going to take this information that's obviously very, put a lot of work into it, and apply that to those past developments to make sure that that is in plans that have already been accepted? That is a big concern. I do not feel that our developers may or may not, this isn't necessarily part of what we, what we, the public, have seen that would, that we know for sure that this will be followed. So I would like to know that question. Another question I have is about the buffer. I noticed on page six, we're talking about a buffer zone, and wondered what was the research that went into that to have appropriate buffer spaces? And I know that's a little later. We talk about 20 feet and on. And I just would like to know, what was the research for that? A big one is on page nine. That's a question about the ARAP, which of course, you know, was brought up during all of the time that the Groves property was being discussed from the very moment I came to talk about it, was about the Section 404, which is a federal requirement. And I know it is connected to ARAP. And I'm wondering, again, how we can make sure that this is being applied to other developments, not just the future developments. And also, who on our team here is qualified to be able to understand this fully? Because I do see an inspector may also have the following responsibilities, and that an inspector is someone who completed the fundamentals of erosion prevention and sediment control Level 1 course. So there's a lot that goes into that, and I would like to know more about the expertise on our team here in our city, and how we can be assured that that will be enforced, and that we are, we do feel qualified to handle that. This is one of the, just to kind of go off on that for a bit, I do know that when we are looking at situations like this, I realize we try to put people in positions to be, use expertise, but sometimes we don't have everything we need. Maybe that person's knowledge does not span as far as it needs to. So I'm wondering what the city feels about making sure you're going to outside sources, people that are actually experts in areas beyond maybe what we know or courses that we pass, which it does give us that foundation. But we do need to be, use that humility, make sure we have everything. Okay, I'll keep going. I know we've got more people who want to talk. Another concern, or another question, I should say, are stormwater, the sediment control. This is on page 14. We talk about all land disturbing activities are going to have adequate erosion prevention and sediment control, and all previously disturbed areas, this is the second part, shall be permanently stabilized. I'm wondering what the plan is for places like the farms behind Otter Creek. This is a serious, serious condition. We know, right now, this is violating the U.S. EPA Water, Clean Water Act. It's affecting those farms. And I'm wondering how this is going to help that situation, how this is going to be applied to the developments going around the farm that's on Northwest Highway that's, that's, might have the sediment going across it. These are the things that really, we really need to know. Page 15, downstream damage, that plays into that as well. Let's see. Page 16, we're talking here about our stormwater design and how it's applicable to all land development. Again, I'm wondering, yes, I talked about the past developments, but any of our developments and all of this is going to be available? I mean, it's all going to be required? How will that be made available to the public so that we can be assured that what's going in near us is not going to harm us or our families or neighbors? So how will that be made available to the public easily? I also have questions about the routine inspections. That's on page 21. I noticed, let's see, I want to make sure I'm certainly referring to the correct area here. Okay. I'm sorry, it's on 20. So permanent stormwater management facilities inspections are going to be done on a regular basis during the construction and by the landowner after construction has been completed to ensure they are functioning as designed. This is on a digital project Semitul portal. And my big question there is, what is that regular basis? Also, back to making sure that we have someone in place who has the expertise, or rely, or have, bringing others in to make sure that this is absolutely enforceable and is working correctly. If you go to page 22, in the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan Requirements, I talked a bit to my stepfather about this, and the reason I did is because he's a registered civil engineer in the state of Kentucky and actually wrote and developed the comprehensive storm pollution prevention plan requirements for the entire Commonwealth of Kentucky. And one of the things we were talking about is, within that paragraph, it says, "The plan shall be sealed by a registered professional engineer or landscape architect licensed in the state of Tennessee." And I was asking him, what about a landscape architect? Would they have that type of knowledge? And he said, well, it really depends. So one of the suggestions there is to just add a note that says, "Who has extensive training in all traditional provisions of stormwater pollution prevention?" To make sure we have folks on our team that really definitely have that knowledge. They know what a waddle is. They know what a rock check dam is. They know what silt, the silt, silt fences, all of the possibilities. So that's not just a checkmark without knowing all of the possibilities. Thank you so much for, I'm sorry to have so much to say, but you gave me a lot to look through, and I appreciate that. On page 26, for projects that cannot meet 100% of runoff reduction, and then it talks about a document to remove 80%. I just would love a little bit more clarification on that. The other big question was about, I think this might be the last big one, is about, whoops, let me find it, so I can direct you correctly. It is about something being conditional, and that was a little concerning to me. I know that in other meetings I've, I've attended, I know that, like, I know that Commissioner... I know that in other meetings I've, I've attended, I know that, like, I know that Commissioner Butler had brought up the fact that they did not necessarily want to approve things conditionally. And so this, page 19, this is, I think this is kind of something to really talk about. "If the city of Fairview has granted conditional approval of the permit, the applicant shall submit a revised plan that conforms to the conditions established by the city of Fairview within the timeframe designated in the conditional approval. However, the applicant shall be allowed to proceed with land disturbing activity so long as it conforms to conditions established by the city of Fairview." That's a little concerning because we don't want something to have a conditional approval and then not have it be completely done. So if I was in the position of commissioner, I would, I would, I would want to change that. I would want it to not be, there'd be any conditions, because this sense, again, this is such a serious, serious issue in our city. I'd like to close with, I don't know if you know this, but I'm a teacher, and I heard the most beautiful thing today from a student. He was in, talking about all sorts of things, but one of the things, he just, this amazing kiddo who gets very excited about what he learns. And he said, "Did you know, so long ago, this man was sitting under a tree, and an apple fell down? And you know what, Ms. Tiffany? He wondered why, he wondered why this apple fell down. He wondered, why did the apple not go right or left or float? Why did it fall down? And he said, him asking those questions, he realized, that led to this understanding of gravity." And so what, he's, he got just so excited about the fact that we can come up with these amazing ideas, solutions, there's just all this knowledge to have out here. And it made me think about this meeting tonight, and it made me think about many times when we have people come up to this podium and they're saying, "I'm having serious flooding issues." And we hear, "Well, the city's hands are tied because," and lots and lots and lots and lots of reasons. And I, I implore you to have that attitude that we all want to have, and that is, let's not continuously look for the reasons why we cannot, but instead look for solutions, because they have got to be there. If that's a matter of cleaning that pipe out, or getting the tree out, whatever it might be, there are solutions, and this is the reason that we're, want to put our trust in our city to help us find the solutions to care for our families, so we can keep our homes, we can stay in this beautiful town, and people will want to move here. They will not want to move here to these lovely homes if they think we don't have it together. And I know we all want to. So thank you so much, I appreciate your time. I would love to have more information about those specifics, but most importantly, how is this going forward? Will this be retroactive onto previous developments? How are we going to make sure that those developments are also following? And then also, checking to make sure we actually have the folks on our team that can do this. Are we ready to be able to do this? These are questions, and if not, let's reach out and get them, so it is, definitely has the teeth that it should. Thank you. Appreciate you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during this public hearing? Yes, sir, if you'll tell us your name and your address.
How are you all doing? I'm Justin Miller, and I live on 7415 Master Shane Road, right down the road from the Mopleys.
If you want to adjust the mic, you're welcome.
Okay.
You look uncomfortable, I don't want you to feel uncomfortable.
Well, sorry, I'm a little late, but I just wanted to weigh in a little bit this evening as we talk about the stormwater. So my wife and I have been in our house for about four years, and all in all, in the four years, we have had about somewhere around $100,000 worth of damage that wasn't covered by insurance. And through these four years, we have communicated with the city about these issues, and we have not gotten help up to this point. And so we just, and it's not just about us, there are other neighbors around us who have constant flooding issues. We, of course, have done digging into why our home was built where it was, and it turns out that the city of Fairview made exceptions, and our home should never have been built where it was. And so we can't sell the house if we want to, and we've lost a lot of very important personal items, not going to go into all that. But it is time, while people are buying and selling land and talking about building new homes, it is time to take care of the citizens who have been adversely affected by this city's past neglect. And it's not that we're opposed to future homes being built, it's that we would like some relief and some attention when our waterways under the streets are crumbling and caving in, and when they weren't built correctly in the first place. So as you all vote, and as you have your conversations, please take into account that some of us out there are really being hurt by past decisions, probably not by you all. But we can right those wrongs, and we would like it if the city would pay attention to the city's past mistakes, help us out, and help our neighbors out, and then eventually, once all that is corrected, we can grow this community safely. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir, if you'll tell us your name and your address.
My name is Joe Hack, 7707 Horn Tavern Road, Fairview, Tennessee. I like to say I was born and raised in Fairview. I've been here all my life, my grandparents are from here, and I just, this water issue has just been, I mean, off of Horn Tavern Road, we had, there was water that was running over the road before they even passed this development. And now, now they're going to build like 50, they've already built like, I don't forget, 40 or 50 houses. I just wonder, why do they pass a development when you've already got flood issues that's, I mean, just runs plumb over the road? So, you know, I was just wondering, we need to look at areas that shouldn't be rezoned for, for more housing, whenever, when we already have problems with the flooding. I've got a beautiful place, it took me years to build it, it's, it's, it's like a park. I love it, it's beautiful. And far as my house being hurt, it's not, but me installing seven or eight culverts that I never had installed before, the people that are signing, these engineers, somebody should be held accountable for these developments, when they sign these developments and they say there's no more water that's going to come out of these developments, we're going to capture this in a retention pond or detention pond? When really and truly, I'm a grade person, I've got a small construction company, and I know all about grade work and water work and all of that. But for, somebody's got to be accountable for destroying other people's property, and I don't know what the law is, and I'm going to find out, but I just, somebody's got to stand up for the taxpayer. The people from Fairview that are rooted from Fairview, been here for years, my grandparents, who stands up for us? I mean, it's, I know it's all about revenue, and, and this, this city's got so big, and we've got bills, and we've got this, we've got to pay this, 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 and that. I understand that, I know growth is going to happen. But at some point, we, we've got to use common sense. If these areas are flooding now, we shouldn't rezone them and put more houses in them areas, because it's just putting more and more water, we're just hurting, I mean, off Horn Tavern down there, we, they done that subdivision down there, they still hadn't even ditched the road. I've got videos of the water eating the road away. I've tried to talk to everybody, I've tried to, won't nobody come, I mean, I even offered to do it myself, to ditch the road myself, to furnish my equipment, do everything myself, just to ditch the road to try to help the water to, I mean, it's just common sense. The water's running out the middle of the road, let's just dig it, there's no ditch. And, you know, I've tried, and I've just, it's frustrating, you know, and, and I don't know how to approach it, but I know just, you know, voicing my opinion and trying to talk to somebody, and, and, you know, but they're trying to rezone across from me off 96 Highway out there. There's certain areas, there's small pipes under 96 Highway that's been there for years. Okay, one of them places beside Kenny Lavenders, past the State Garage down there, there's, there's a pond beside Kenny Lavenders that runs right into my pond, which I've got a beautiful stone, uh, uh, fall right there, a waterfall, it ain't probably 30 feet from my house. If they rezone that off across 96 and put all these houses in there, they're going to wash me away. I mean, it's going to be 20 feet from my basement right there, and, you know, they can tell me all day long that it ain't, the water's not going to change. I'm here to tell you, I've had stuff it in, I've had, I've had several development, Westwood behind the elementary school, I went out there and looked at that time and time again. They got retention ponds or whatever, but there's no water that goes in them. Whoever designed that did not design that right. And the water is just running straight through four-foot pipes, right straight down by 96, up underneath 96, and I mean, I know it's a low area, but still, we've got to control this floodwater and we, and hold it in, the problem is, it takes property. These retention ponds and these detention ponds, they don't want to, they don't want to give up the property it takes to maintain that water and hold it and release it slowly. But this is something that we've got to look at. I mean, we've got to look at the stuff like this, because it just ain't right to flood people's property out. I mean, it's just, you know, that's simple. But thank y'all for listening to me, and, and y'all have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this?
Leslie Street, I'm 1062 Highway 96 North. On the ordinance that we're fixing to, or you are fixing to approve, is there anything in there that talks about what to do if someone has violated it? How do you fix what they messed up as far as if it messes up a person, a citizen's home, or their property? Is that in here on how we can fix that, or is it just a way for the city to make more money? Because if there's an issue, and someone's violated something, and it's hurt someone else's home, do they, how do they get reimbursed for their damages? Just wanting to know about that on here.
Is there anyone else? Thank you, Leslie. Okay, we will close the public hearing. Item 10A2, second and final reading of ordinance 2022-08, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance of the city of Fairview to amend the city of Fairview municipal code to create Chapter 4 of Title 14, which shall be known as the city's stormwater ordinance, and shall govern and regulate stormwater within the city of Fairview corporate limits. Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion among the board?
I would like to have a few comments, Mayor, if you don't mind. So obviously, this has been something that has been discussed time and time again, and is absolutely important to every citizen in the city of Fairview, especially those that are, that are being flooded every time it rains. And I know it's going to take some time here, but I, I think it's important for us to discuss some of these questions that we had with the ordinance. Before we get into those questions and answering some of those questions, this is the reason that we're passing this ordinance tonight, if it does pass, to offer the city, the citizens, more protection, more protection than what they've had in the past. And because we have not reached that MS4, that, that threshold, we were not the ones that did the inspection that were holding people accountable. Now, with that being said, looking back, would it, would it have been good for us to pass this 10 years ago, or come up with that? We are financially in a place now where we can manage this inspection, we have the personnel now that our city manager and BOC feels comfortable where we can manage these inspections that we can take on, and I don't want to call it a burden, but we can take on this responsibility. In the past, the state has been responsible for doing that. I think this is a huge step for the city of Fairview, where we are going to be making sure that we are in compliance with the EPA, and we are protecting our citizens. So before we get into the questions, I just wanted to say, this, this ordinance, I have completely read through it, and I feel that this is the protection that the citizens certainly deserve. And maybe we can kind of work through some of these questions together, Mr. Collins, and some of these are going to be yes to no, just, just to get through this. So enforcement, we talked about enforcing this, we are going to be enforcing this ordinance and through the inspections and so forth. And how do we move forward? When does this immediately, the ordinance is, is passed, let's say the ordinance passes this meeting, when is this going to go into effect, moving forward?
I believe it goes into effect two weeks from tomorrow, I believe is the date.
Okay, so any building permit, anything that happens after, after that two weeks, this is going to be in effect?
Correct.
Okay. And I, and I think that I can take this on, you add to this, retrospectively speaking, issues that were, that are happening currently, that were approved by the state for the city to engage in fixing all of those issues, which I know that we have issues in the city of Fairview, I've been to many of these properties myself, for the city to engage in fixing all of these issues is, would be a substantial amount of money that would be coming out of the city's budget, and that is not budgeted, which would be a significant amount of money to the rest of the citizens for the city of Fairview. Whether that be right, wrong, or indifferent, retrospectively speaking, that would be extremely difficult for the city of Fairview. Do you have anything to add to that?
Commissioner Dawson, we could have this conversation for a week, so I'll be kind of brief on this. There are, there are some instances where, where retrospectively or retroactively, this may apply. It depends on where the submission for a particular project is in the process. It would be impossible to give a blanket answer on what will or will not apply retrospectively. It depends on what, what has been submitted so far and where those are in the submission process. It's just the nature of where that is. We also have to be careful that what we're talking about is matters of concern on public rights of way and public infrastructure related to stormwater and the like. Regardless of this passes, or didn't pass, or some other thing, city, the city of Fairview, and all cities, not just the city of Fairview, are limited in what they can do on private property, or that they can remedy on private property for another private property owner. So we do have to be careful within, within those things, to the extent that the city can, we will. I would like to point out that, and, and make sure the point is made, that there is some belief that the city is continuing to ignore the complaints that have come through the process. My comment to that is nothing could be further from the truth. The fact is that there, there are a couple of things to consider. First, stormwater management today is not the same type of stormwater management that was in place fifteen or twenty years ago. Regulations change, developments change, requirements change. In the last fourteen months, the City of Fairview has hired not one but two full-time staff, licensed engineer, licensed engineers, because we're being responsible to these complaints and these concerns. So the idea that the city is not, um, is a little counter to where we are. The fact that we're here tonight with the staff that we have, with the education, the expertise, the level of certifications for inspections that we have, and this document you have before you is an indication of what the city is doing, not what the city isn't doing.
Quick, quickly, buffer research. Um, I know everything was researched. You guys spent a lot of time in this document. Buffer research, um, other, everything was thoroughly researched when we-
It, it was, and let's, I wanna be clear that the buffer research is specific to stormwater. I believe there's, when you say or use the word buffer, not you, but gen- general terms, the term buffer, um, somehow indicates some sort of distanced protection from a development to another development or a site to another site. That's not the type of buffer we're talking about. The buffer we're talking about here is specific to stormwater runoff and stormwater protections.
Okay, great. Qualification of the, of the folks that actually, um, put this document together and that will be inspecting and enforcing. Can you speak on the, the qualification?
I have two licensed engineers, um, two licensed professional engineers who are on staff. I would hazard a guess to say that there's no other city in the state our size that has two licensed engineers on staff to manage this. We have four state-certified inspectors, of which I am one.
Okay, perfect. Does this plan meet all EPA guidelines and regulations?
I have no idea, sir.
Okay, speak on that.
I have no idea. I, I couldn't begin to tell you EPA. I, I don't know. I know it's in accordance with the State of Tennessee and what we're allowed to enforce.
Okay, and I would hope that the State of Tennessee would be in, in, uh, in line with what EPA guidelines are?
I would assume yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, we can just assume, sure. So if, if there is an issue during the inspection, I, I know we don't actively disseminate information with a, um, uh, infraction, but if somebody, i- if a homeowner or a property owner was to request, how would they, i- is that possible for them to request?
They can submit an open directions request, yes, sir.
They can, okay, great. Great.
And I presume we still have on our website the link to State of Tennessee, so that anyone could look up and see if developers have any charges against them at this point in time.
I guess my last question is about the conditional approval, and I know that there are certain periods that we have to allow that conditional approval, to either allow a project to continue, uh, and, and it's within the benefit of the community and the city. Could you give me an example, or why do we have that in here, that we have to have that flexibility? And how can we still make sure that we have the accountability?
So, again, broad discussion, it could be
Sure.
very lengthy in that, so I'll be, I'll be brief in that, but um, conditional approval could be as simple as the city recognizes that a repair or alteration needs to be made to a specific site. Typically, those are sometime sensitive. It could be weather sensitive, depending on where you are. In that case, we're going to issue a conditional approval to begin work, to make a repair. It would not make sense for the city, in, in a, in a simple term, um, to hold off on a repair for a full project approval when there's gonna be some requirement that work be done to mitigate a full project repair that's necessary. In that case, you'd be, have a conditional approval to proceed with work until such time as a full approval for an enhanced improved project to be approved.
That's perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And in closing, for myself, Mayor, I, so, and I appreciate everybody that came up to talk today. It's so important that we have good, healthy discussion about this and have your input. Ms. Mobley, I, I appreciate you bringing up also the, the scientific method of determining what, what is the truth. I think there's gonna be a great opportunity for us. When is that we're gonna have the discussion specifically about stormwater and having the experts to come talk to us?
Commissioner Dawson, I believe the date discussed was April 21st.
April 21st. We'll have that out on the city website and we'll discuss it. That's gonna be the opportunity where the, the citizens and the BOC members, planning commission, we can all come together and know exactly what the rules are and what the expectation is and responsibilities, eh, all of those issues. Some of those answers objectively can be provided to us, uh, and, and I hope everybody can attend that. Thank you.
Is there any, any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I, I just have a question. I, Lori came to see me and I rode out with her to, um, Western Woods. The pipe that's on city property, do we have someone who regularly checks and cleans out um, pipes that are on city property like that? I did see the tree growing up through the pipe. It did appear in, to me, that it was clogged. I, I'm not a professional. But, um, I just was wondering how maintenance is handled.
Specific to that site or generally?
That and generally.
So, specific to that site, that pipe, the outfall for that pipe is not on city property. It's on private property. It's owned by Mr. Spicer. This project, and I can go into this project into specific detail, and I can go into Lori, and I apologize if I mispronounced the last thing. Q, thank you. Specific to the pipe, as we've discussed ad nauseam in this room where that development, the issue with that is the outfall for the detention pond is lower than the entrance to the pipe that goes under um, Wiley Circle. It also discharges on the private property at a point higher than the outfall, so it's just a small pond on private property that transfers water under the road from one private property detention pond to another private property outfall. The city, absent of purchasing property or condemning property, does not have the ability to go on private property and move that or intentionally distribute stormwater from one private property to another private property. That will be a requirement of the detention pond owner, the HOA, or in this case, the, the owner of the detention pond and Mr. Spicer, um, should that, should that discussion take place. So far, the private property owner, Mr. Spicer, has refused to, to allow anyone to adjust any stormwater outfall on his property, first. Second, as it relates to Lori's property, there are a couple of issues at question three, in fact. The first is that I know there was a repair made to her, or a cleaning of one of her gutters on the house and a removal or an addition to a pipe that moved water away from the, um, the beginning of the carport where her garage door meets, meets the carport, and there was water that was ponding there. That is about one foot below grade if you're standing on Nathaniel Woods Boulevard. Second, the, her fence, the back part of her fence, and I was there yesterday, the back part of her fence is, um, installed in a city stormwater easement. And if you look at the fence, particularly from the photos that were submitted, there is a section of about one foot of fence where you can see that one foot of fence meets the ground, grass grows against it. It holds or ponds water in the backyard. Um, because of that fencing and the tightness of the fencing, it po- it ponds water back toward the house, and that's where some of the water comes to in the backyard. Third, specific to her yard, if you walk the backyard and you look at the grade, there is a, a storm drain inlet on Nathaniel Woods Boulevard that runs, um, parallel to the side of her house into the detention pond between Nathaniel Woods and Wiley Circle. That storm drain, um, the piping for that storm drain is above grade from the stormwater easement that we have in the backyard. So if you go to her backyard, even if you were to remove that fence, what you'd have is a ponding area there because the storm drain, the pipe, is at a higher elevation grassed than the low spot behind her house, which ponds water behind her house. So I have, specific to that, a fence that ponds water that's in the easement. I have an easement that's below grade for an existing stormwater, um, inlet on Nathaniel Woods. And I have a driveway and a carport and garage door that are below grade from the street that moved water from a downspout from a gutter to the side of the house. So, um, I hope that answers the question, but I've been over it as broadly as I can on, on that site specifically.
The pond, um, just help me with this. The pond that I'm talking about, it, I don't think it's owned by Mr. Spicer.
It isn't.
It's on the side where her house is, and there's a pipe that comes out, that, that water goes out into this pretty big pond.
That's correct.
And there's a tree growing out of that pipe, but I, I don't think that's Mr. Spicer's property.
That's not Mr. Spicer's. The outfall across the street that runs under Wiley is Mr. Spicer's.
Okay, 'cause this is just a, a pipe that comes out, waters come in sort of out of that pipe into a pretty huge pond, like in a corner right past her.
Correct. That's the detention pond. It's owned by the developer. It's still owned and maintained by the developer. The issue for the city is we don't have an eas- I'm, I'm sorry?
It's maintained by the developer still?
It is. It's owned and maintained by the developer. It's not-
Tree growing out of it and clogged pipe?
It's owned by the developer. It is not owned by the City of Fairview. The City of Fairview does not have an easement. With that, uh, part of the issue with that specifically is if we, if the tree is removed, the only remedy for that is going to be to redirect the outfall. If you own Wiley Circle facing that outfall, the outfall should come from that piping and fall to your right into the detention pond. Unfortunately, it falls to the left and it's washed out a grade there, and that's where that tree has, has grown in. It's from silt that's made its way from the, from the development, really from the beginning of the development until now. If you were to go back and dig that out, which is really the only solution, um, other than moving water across the road, um, the only solution there would be to dig out that detention pond and turn it into a retention pond. It would hold water all the time. It would not drain, um, which would be the intent of a retention pond. But again, that's gonna be some communication between the pond or the detention pond owner. Um, primarily, so far, he has been reluctant to have any communication with the city regarding, um, increasing the capacity of that pond.
Owner is the developer.
That's correct.
And the developer is the person who should be responsible for maintaining that.
That's correct. The same person who cuts the grass. That's correct. That's right.
I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor to vote on the stormwater ordinance acceptance.
Mayor, if I could, just have a few more. Pause, look, just to add on to Mr. Dawson's, we, we do hear complaints about the water runoff. We've reached out to Intas. Intas is municipal advisory board. Um, we have a state representative that is professional engineer in stormwater management trying to come April 21st. He's gonna present to us about drainage law. And so that's the question of where can we spend City of Fairview dollars on private property? Where can, you know, where does that start and stop? So he's gonna come and speak specifically to the drainage law, rights and rights responsibilities of property owners and vice versa. We're also gonna try and, I'm waiting for him to confirm his time, to try and pair him up with our engineer to visit a few sites and get a third-party letter from an engineer just to get an opinion on some of those sites. Then also, we're trying to work on something for some other presentation for stormwater that night. But I wanted to try and just go through some of the questions a little bit, just to add a little more discussion on it. I think, um, just for clarification, on past developments, if it hasn't been submitted for construction plans or grading permit, so if it's just a zoning, it would be, it would be submitting construction plans from here on out in the future. So anything that's just a zoning approval right now would fall in here into this, if that makes sense. I, I don't guess any active state permits would, would be able to have enforcement on, on this new adjustment if there's any active grading or development going on, but if you have not submitted construction plans, this would be part of what our staff requires and reviews when you submit those things. We talked a little bit about the buffer zone requirements. We have Mr. Bykerman back there if he wants to add any, uh, notes to it, but I think most of those are based off what kind of stream it is, uh, how much flow, how much rate and that, and from state and federal, um, law, you have requirements of how far away you have to stay from those streams. If I say something wrong, just stand up and yell at me. The AARP, the same thing would be, um, that's kind of based off of individual crossing permit, and so as you cross a stream, you're gonna have to require that, that individual permit that has very excessive detail of your crossing, your removal, your access. There was one that was just in Castle very recently that was on the state. We've talked about downstream damage. So the 21st, our workshop should talk more about, um, the legal, you know, water flow from private property to private property. Currently, when a permit's pulled, it's on the state site, so you have really good access to it. As, as it continues to be pulled through here, when somebody submits, will it still be on that state site called out? So we'll still have access to the permits pretty, 'cause you can see everything on there. You can go and see the AARP and everything they've applied for. Routine inspections, what is that regular basis? There's some, um, some standard state law, I think it's, um, I don't even want to say it and be wrong, but if on an active work site, the, the developer themselves has to keep an active SWIP box, so a permit box, that maintains daily site inspections and updates. And then there's, um, what would be the enforcement inspections from a, from a city standpoint? Mr. Collins, do you have that answer?
We would, we would inspect in accordance with, with those guidelines.
The, um, the information on not 100%, only 80%, is there any clarification or further detail on that piece that said if you cannot control 100% of your water but only 80%? I know we're digging into the weeds, but if there's any reference from-
I, I believe those are also gonna be a part of the, of the FEMA guidelines and the state guidelines that we've, we've gotten there. That's not, that, that's not a city arbitrary number. Those are numbers prescribed to us as a part of the percentages. Kevin, uh, you could probably follow up on that, but that's a, that's what we're doing to mirror the state. That's not something that the city has, has decided on its own.
Thank you, sir. And just, as a general note, you know, when we invested in, in our first engineer, we had, we, everything had been subcontracted out until a little over a year ago. Now we've invested in another engineer. You, when I ask him about the stormwater stuff, when I ask about the stuff we're working on, you can see the excitement. Like, he's excited to help us improve and make these investments into our community, and so it's, um, I know we've come a long way. We're still a small town and trying, and trying to get ahead of it and, and do smart things, but making investments like this full-time engineer and another engineer and making stormwater ordinance plans are things that are gonna hopefully get us there to be controlled, smart. We have more enforcement than we've ever had. I, I see it from, I get calls from citizens saying it's not enough. I get calls from developers saying it's too much. So it's, you know, you, you hear it from both sides. But we, lately, we have had more oversight and more input and continually daily increased review from our staff than I've ever seen before, so I, I think things like this are, we truly are making positive progress.
I would also like to add that technically, the State of Tennessee does not require a city to take on this kind of responsibility until our population reaches 10,000. And because we have heard you and we understand, and we all live here, you know, we're doing this now instead of waiting until the state says, okay, it's time for you to do it. So we've kind of brought this back in-house so that we locally can control and police the stormwater. So that's a big step for us because we could have waited. We could have waited until the state said, you're gonna have to do it. So please believe me that we are doing something ahead of the time that we're required to do it because we do hear you and we understand. Any more discussion on the vote? We have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no more discussion, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rennie?
Aye. Item 11, new business. Ordinance 2022-12, an ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee to amend the zoning ordinance. I'm gonna stop reading. Vice Mayor?
An ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee to amend the zoning ordinance by rezoning 1.35 acres of property consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042, Parcel 12301, located at 7212 Old Nashville Road from RS40 Residential to R15 Residential. Owner, Jack LaRonde.
at 7212 Old Nashville Road from RS40 residential to R15 residential, owner Jack LaRonde.
We have heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is the owner here? Mr. Collins, do you, can you speak to this about why we're rezoning this?
Mayor, I believe this was rezoned because of an effort to construct a single-family home.
Correct. And he's doing an R15 instead of an R40?
I've got some notes I can read from, just from Planning Commission. He's requesting an R15 zoning, which would be a 15,000 square foot lot minimum. It was unanimously passed the Planning Commission. It does fall in line with the 2040 plan. He has a 1 point, I was hoping it would say it up there, 1.3 or 1.4 acre project.
1.35 acres.
Lot there, 1.35, it does say that top there. Parcel that he is trying to divide into two, single-family lots. He would remove the existing house. The lots would be over 20,000. I think it'd be like 20,000 to 25,000 square foot in size. But in order to, he went to the R15 to have a 75-foot lot road frontage. The Kingwood parcels to the south there are all 15,000 square foot lots. I think that's an R15 pud. The, to the north side there is a multifamily project and single-family project. To the east side there is a 4.57 acre parcel.
So, it matches the neighborhood?
General area there, yes, ma'am, and in the plan as well.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. 11B, first reading of ordinance 2022-13, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee amending the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30th, 2022.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Collins, would you like to speak to this, please?
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, what you have is your amended budget for the current year. Our budget year, our fiscal year is July 1 each year to June 30 of the following year. Each year, we amend our budget at least once. We hold off on most of our capital expenditures until the second half of the year, confirm all of our substantial revenue for the year, and then amend our budget to make sure that all of our departments work within our budget and that our total budget is balanced as we're required by law. We're required to have a balanced budget each year. When we pass the budget, we're also required to have a balanced budget at the end of the year. That's what this does for us. There are no substantial changes in the budget. There are, most of this is literal cleanup, department to department, to make sure that we've adequately funded each of our line items. We do have in this a slight increase in our sales tax revenue that we've experienced this year, which we thought we would have, but we, that's been confirmed for us. The second part of this is the funding of our compensation plan. We've been working on a revised compensation plan for about two years now, a little over two years. This is really good news for us because we're able to do it with current dollars and not future dollars. As you're all aware, we've worked really hard over the last few years. Your board has included to make sure that when we spend city dollars on budgets, that we are spending existing dollars. We're not committing future dollars. Committing future dollars is really not good financially. So, we're living within our own means for this year and we're excited to do that and to provide those changes. And then lastly, I'll report to you that our property tax revenue was as expected for the year. You may recall that we budgeted $2.5 million. That was an anticipated 25% increase budgetarily. That was about $500,000 increase. You may recall that we heard that we had underbudgeted that by as much as $400,000. I can report to you tonight that we were at $2,533 for the year. So, we're $33,000 over where we forecast we would be almost a year ago. So, within that, our numbers look good. Our projections looked good. Our revenues look good and our expenditures are a little below where we thought we'd be for the year. So, another good year for budget, obviously. This falls in line with the audit that you accepted in January. Clearly, that was another audit that looked good for the city. This amended budget is a reflection of that. Our new budget that we'll get into for the year that begins July 1, our work session for that with you will be at the May 4 meeting. That will be the most investment-oriented budget in the City of Fairview the City of Fairview's ever had. That will be the meeting where we discuss capital projects for stormwater and for bond projects. We worked for quite some time to make sure the bond issue worked the way we thought it would, and it did, to work to make sure our revenues were sustainable, and they are. So, we will get right into the capital investment part of this and that's when you will see the true dirt work, earthwork, and changing visually of the city that we've been working on for about four years to complete. So, we look forward to that meeting as well.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. 11C, discussion of Citizens Academy, Vice Mayor.
I ask for the opportunity to put together a situation where the community could come together and we, the Board of Commissioners and Planning Commission and city staff, and answer questions. It's very frustrating. I don't know if y'all know this, but the way our Board of Commissioner meetings are set up, they're set up a certain way and we can't a lot of times do a question answer. So, I just thought it would be beneficial if we could really, you know, put this out to the community where we could get together and just answer questions. What I was seeing it as is educating the community about the different zoning designations so that people would really understand exactly what that means. Sometimes when, you know, we have a roomful of people and they want to ask questions and during our business meeting, that's not conducive for this meeting. It just would give us the opportunity to have the community come and ask their questions and then we could give answers with the staff who know the particulars of the different zonings and that would just educate everyone. I, a few weeks ago, I was at a friend's house and someone came around with petition for, you know, ask him to sign it. And the petition said that there were going to be 84 homes built on a certain piece of property and, actually, they weren't homes. It was townhomes, apartments, whatever, multifamily. And neither here nor there, they mentioned it was low income, just anything, you know, to get someone to sign this petition. It was totally inaccurate. And what concerns me is when that happens, it just gives, you know, people get really concerned over things that might not be exactly what's happening. So, this is just something I would like to see happen so that we can all get together and get the truth about, you know, the different zonings and how, when things are zoned a certain way and maybe projects seem to be happening altogether, just understanding that maybe a developer is, you know, the big picture. Maybe a developer's coming in and he's wanting to spend quite a bit of his own money to improve roads in that area or put stop signs in that area. And if the whole entire project is, you know, as one, then he can come in and do all of that at one time and save the city money and in turn, our taxpayers. So, I just want some education and I just thought that would be a good idea.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So, Vice Mayor Anderson, is this, is this a situation where, kind of like our BOC boot camp where we hold like a town hall, the city manager comes and explains zoning, annexation, things of that nature, or is it specific developments or what is your thought?
I think both. I think it would, it would be a situation where we could explain the zoning, how it works, what it means, each designation, and then if anyone has questions, even if it's a specific project, they could ask those.
This is a one-time meeting then, a one-time academy or?
You know, I'm just putting it out there. I think that it's up for discussion of how it would best serve our community.
We, we used to have, on months that had a fifth Thursday, have a town hall or whatever on the fifth Thursday. I don't know if we want to revisit that where there's five Thursdays in a month to have that extra town hall meeting, kind of an open discussion. We could have topics that we could hit on or things.
That worked well. I remember those and any month that has a fifth Thursday, that was used to have a sort of a town hall to answer questions and it worked really well at the time.
Is this something we need a motion on? Do we need to discuss it with staff?
No, ma'am. This is full board discussion, whichever, whichever you attempted to choose the staff, wouldn't you?
Can we, can we put this maybe on the work session, the next work session as an agenda item? Would you be okay with that?
Ms. Johnson, can you put it on the agenda? Thank you. Any other discussion on the Citizen Academy? Hearing none. We'll move on to item 12, Communications. Commissioner Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quick congratulations to Officer Roberts, Spicer, and Rasmussen on graduating the academy. No further discussion tonight.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I think it's communication and us all working together is what's most important to help everybody get resolution. I just encourage everyone to please keep our community beautiful and don't throw out trash, but help pick up. Thank you.
Mr. Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to say thank you for everybody coming out tonight, especially those that spoke. We certainly need you to speak and obviously, it's not easy to get up here in front of everybody and to talk, but we really do appreciate it. Thank you. Looking forward to utilizing that $2 million plus for stormwater, the issues that we have and trying to fix the things that we can here in the City of Fairview. It's going to be important to our citizens for sure. Just a quick update on the Park Operational Plan Committee. We met this Tuesday. We had the Aquin community come in, Friends of the Bowie Nature Park. It was a great discussion. And Mr. Collins, is it April 14th that we're having our work session? It's the 7th? April 7th, if everybody put that on your calendar, we're having a work session here at 5:30 specifically talking about the park operational plan. And once again, super excited about the playground. Equipment is being delivered and is really the talk of the town, so super, super excited about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
I want to remind everyone that come April 21st, tell your neighbors, tell everyone that you see, and we will all learn about stormwater. Some of the developers have even gotten together and they're bringing some engineers other than our staff engineers. So, there'll be plenty of people here to talk to and ask questions of. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned.